Good morning. I'll call the July 7th, 2020 City Council meeting to order. If you would, please stand. I'll call on Councilman Brooks to lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It is truly my honor and privilege this morning to welcome my good friend Reverend Mark Mackey Senior, pastor of the Redeemed Christian Center, the newest congregation in my district. I understand he has several parishioners here with him this morning, and they have already begun working in our community and making a true difference. So we welcome Reverend Mark Mackey Senior.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to be alive, isn't it? Let's take a moment just to give God a hand clap and praise. Can we do that? Let us bow our heads in order of prayer. Father, God, it's once again that we come, as I'm gonna let us speak, as we know how, just to say thank you. Father, we thank you for watching over us last night as we slept in our home. Father, for waking us up early this morning. Heavenly Father, we come today just admonishing and acknowledging who you are. You are the only true and wise God. Father, we know that without you, we can do nothing, but with you, we can do everything. And so, Father, we ask that you come into this place and make your presence known and felt, and bless this assembly on this morning, Lord. Heavenly Father, not only that, but we ask that you lead us and guide us, so that we may do things that are pleasing in your sight and good for the city of Jackson. Heavenly Father, we ask right now that you continue to bless us in the midst of this pandemic. Father, we thank you right now for what you've already done. We thank you for just keeping us in all of our ways in spite of ourselves, Lord. You blessed us mightily, and for that, we say thank you, Lord. Heavenly Father, we come today to ask you to bless all of our officials of this city, bless our state, and, Father, bless our world. Heavenly Father, we ask right now that you continue to bless our service workers, that you bless those that are on the front lines in our hospitals, guide the hearts and minds of every doctor and surgeon, and, Father, reveal to our secrets that we can share with the rest of the world. Heavenly Father, we call on you and ask you these things not because we think you can, but, Father, we know that you need them. Heavenly Father, we come today just to say thank you for all that you've done for us. Father, we ask that you bless those that are behind our prison bars. Heavenly Father, we ask right now that you continue to keep our sicknesses at a minimum, Heavenly Father, help our hospitals to stay at minimum capacity. Now, Father, we ask that you go into the standbys, keep us near the cross where there's a healing stream that flows from Calvary's mountain. And, Father, we'll be mindful to be in the honor, to be in glory and praise. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll refer you to roll call. Sandy, you'll see that all council members are present. I have approval of the minutes from the June 16th and June 23rd budget hearings. Those minutes were emailed out to you, and so if there are no additions or corrections to the minutes, they'll stand approved as read. No proclamations today. Item six is invitation for public comment. Anyone has any comments they want to make in favor of or opposition to any items on first reading, you raise your hand at that time and you'll be recognized. First reading. Item one is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the animal control ordinance for the city of Jackson, Tennessee. I'll call on Alex Reed and Whitney Owen.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'll just turn it over to Whitney. Whitney's the one that's got all the information. This is, as we talked about on Thursday, it's a repeal of the ordinance passed about a year ago by the council, and I'll turn it over to Whitney to kind of tell you what we're going to do from this repeal.
The goal of this suggestion is to repeal the ordinance so that we can approach it from a more proactive and community-friendly way. I don't necessarily think the ordinance was a bad thing. I think we got ahead of ourselves. Most of the areas where these ordinances have been successful are areas that already had a low-cost spay neuter operation or program in place that was easily accessible and widely publicized for several years prior to the passing of the ordinance. So we have started penalizing people for things they cannot financially reach, and I think we need to approach it from a more community assistance-based direction as opposed to a criminal prosecution direction.
All right.
Our plan, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Our plan is if, on the repeal of this, she's already started a process on that, and we're gonna get a group of citizens together to kind of advise us on laws and ordinances to pass and policies to implement, get good community feedback.
Correct. Our low-cost spay neuter program that we took over from West Tennessee Healthcare went into effect on Friday. We've already had over 150 requests for vouchers in four days, so it has been very well received with the public so far, and all of those requests, other than about a dozen of them, came in prior to it making the news. So from one Facebook post being shared and advertised amongst the community, we had over 140 requests for vouchers. So people are willing to comply. They want to get their animals fixed. It's just not financially feasible in a lot of situations without help. So we've, I've got an appointment with Amy Mallett, the lady that used to run the program with West Tennessee Healthcare, that we can finish the transition this afternoon as far as the program goes. The first vouchers are gonna be sent out first next week.
How many, how many people have we had, how many animals have we had registered under the current ordinance?
The only reason they have to register is if they're filing for an exemption. If they are in compliance, they don't have to register at all. We have had zero people apply for an exemption since January 14th.
Okay, and how many, how many people have paid the $20? Is that, is that associated with the exemption?
Yeah, that's the exemption. If they do not want to alter their animal inside the city limits, they're required to apply for an exemption and pay the $20 fee. There have been zero people do that since January.
Okay.
What is the cost now with the voucher? What is the voucher giving them? How much off?
Okay, so the voucher acts as a coupon, basically. It's $60 off the cost of a cat, $75 off the cost of a dog. Obviously, your out-of-pocket expense is gonna vary, excuse me, it's gonna vary widely depending on which vet you choose to do. And there's some vets that will not perform a spay neuter surgery without pre-operational blood work, which is their prerogative, but it is an additional hundred-plus dollars added to the cost. So obviously, it's not gonna help a ton in those situations, but you have a couple or three low-cost vets that are already lower cost. And if you are altering a cat, you can be out of the office with paying less than $20. If you're altering an average-sized dog, 40 or 50 pounds, you can be out of the office paying less than $35.
And how many, kind of to follow up on my previous question, how many violations have we had of this ordinance?
If we had time to enforce them, I could pass out tickets all day long.
Yeah.
But we only have two animal control officers for about 15,000 animal-owning households in the city, and we're, we stay exceptionally busy answering, running at loose, running at large calls, potentially aggressive dog calls, the extreme cat overpopulation. We've got a waiting list for cat traps for two or three weeks long, so we stay really busy with that, so we don't really have time to even enforce the ordinance.
Yeah.
But if, if we chose to do so, I could pass out citations for it literally all day long. You could start at one end of the street and pass out a dozen before you got to the other end.
Excuse me, so in a nutshell, the ordinance was misguided and is ineffective?
I don't think it was misguided so much as it was just ill-timed, because I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think we just skipped a step.
Okay. What would be the better time?
After we've had an easily accessible low-cost spay neuter program in effect for, I'd say, four or five years.
Okay, and I believe Alex alluded to the fact that, are you all gonna come back with additional language for another ordinance, or this repeal will just take this off and we'll just move in that direction?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. The repeal's gonna take it off the books. There was one addition to change the health officer from the Director of Health and Sanitation to the Director of the Animal Care Center, but it's, this is just coming off the books, and anything that our advisory group will come to us as far as ordinance or policy go, we'll make that report to you all.
Do you have any idea on the timeline for that?
I'm hopeful six months.
All right, any additional questions? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to?
Oh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion here. I think it's fully fair. This ordinance was worked on way over two years. Ms. Dr. Vicki Lake was the chairman of that committee, and I have been trying to get in touch with her. Evidently, she's out of town, and I'd like everybody to get the whole story and where this ordinance came from and what it was, and I'd like to table this matter at least another month and to give an opportunity to hear both sides of this.
All right, we got a motion to table the ordinance.
Second.
Has a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Dodd was second. Counsel, please vote. We've got...
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay.
In the future, can we get a count on the...
She's working on it.
Okay.
The motion failed four to six.
Four to five.
All right, so we'll come back to public hearings. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to proposed ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
The motion passes. Who just, what?
Seven with one against one abstained.
I was gonna say, you guys gotta hold them just for a moment.
Seven for one against one.
Just give you more time.
Yeah, that would be great.
So come back, come back to your vote.
Everybody go back. Okay.
Okay.
So we have six to pass, two no, and one abstained.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 200, first reading is proposed budget amendment, the amount of $50,732 to fund the city's match for the Airport Economic Development Grant.
Thank you. The airport, the airport received an economic development grant, $913,000 grant. There's a 10% max. They've asked the city and the county to share in that max. The city's portion would be $50,732. What this budget amendment would do would redirect what it budgeted funds already from the Animal Care Center line item to the airport line item in our budget, so this would not be an increase in our total budget.
All right, any questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. We'll open up the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? You recognized? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, nine zero.
All right, item three is a proposed budget amendment in the amount of $80,000 to recognize JP Jackson Police Department Award for the JAG grant. I think I saw Captain Tisdale came in. Oh, there's Chief Weiser back there, okay.
Move the approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Chief, you wanna come up here and explain, then we'll open the public hearing after that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This particular JAG grant covers the gang prosecutor, and it's a 100% grant, but I'm not sure after this year how longer, how long it'll be funded, but we did get it through 21.
All right, any question for Chief Weiser?
On these JAG grants, we get, do we allocate those towards different things every year? Are they, is this been ongoing for the gang prosecutor?
Yeah, they're, yeah, there are some equipment, and then there, there are positions like the gang prosecutor, so.
Okay, so next year, will we need to budget, if we're not sure that we'll be getting this grant, we need to budget accordingly to fund that position, or is that something?
If we want to maintain that position, yes.
All right.
And, and that may be something, when we look at it in the future, that we can talk to the district attorney's office about maybe co-funding if the, if this grant runs out.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chief Weiser, good morning.
Good morning.
With respect to the gang activity in Jackson, where are we at?
Well, compared to last year, homicides are down. Majority homicides are either jail or gang-related. There, we did have a, one or two domestic homicides last year, or they involved some type of robbery. We've always had a gang presence in the city of Jackson. That's where I spent the majority of my career, working on the gang unit. I can tell you eight or nine years ago, some of our local media outlets would like to say that the city was under siege due to gang violence and daily shootings, and I do recall we had weekly briefings because we did have a lot of gang activity. However, we've been able to do some substantial criminal investigations and prosecute some of these groups and individuals and this organized crime in federal court. Those type investigations continue, so I guess the answer to your question is, we still have a gang presence, however, it's not where we were seven or eight years ago, so we need to continue to work and strive to continue to decrease gang activity. However, you know, there needs to be an intervention and a prevention component to it, and there was a time several years ago, we were teaching a gang, anti-gang curriculum in all the elementary schools, and that was still a grant. That particular grant ran out. We partnered with the community to go into the schools and teach this program. So I think along with enforcement, there has to be a prevention, education component to it that we're not necessarily doing right now, because that particular grant ran out.
Chief, you touched a bit on it. How important is community policing not only to deter gang violence, but in general, what you do?
Well, I mean, we, you know, there were areas eight years ago in the city that the gangs controlled. Kids couldn't go out and play in their neighborhoods. You go in those areas now, and there's kids out playing, you know. So it's very important that we establish those relationships, because where the citizens have a good line of communication and they can feel confident that the police is gonna respond, and if, you know, if they want to remain anonymous, that they know that they can trust us, that...
And in the, in the past, I believe you said that you, you were only able to do that work in the school system because of a grant, correct?
Yes. I mean, the only work we're doing in the school system right now is, we have a dare program, but it's, it's only, it's, it's only been done in one or two of the elementary schools.
Sure.
Captain Tisdale, he's involved in some mentoring programs. You know, Councilman Dodd, he tries to stay very active in the school, and we try to partner with him when we can, but as far as the education and prevention component, that doesn't exist then. So, you know, we've talked to the school board and years pass, and, you know, unless the law has changed, and I haven't reviewed it in several years, but the school is supposed to do a gang assessment within the school system and direct whatever resources they need, you know, as far as game prevention and those type things.
Maybe we can look at that. And, and my, my last question, the community policing line item in, in this year's budget was cut. Isn't that true?
No, I think there may have been some confusion. I know there was one media outlet that quoted me as saying that we, we were raising our own money to do what we did in the community, and to clarify that, on our community events, a lot of our community events, we utilize money out of the, out of our West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation Fund, the Jackson Police Department Committee Fund. The police department raises the money to go into that account through Andy Bailey 5K, the Police Experience, a number of things. And what I said is, this year, due to COVID, we were unable to do a fundraiser, so we don't have the resources in that particular account that we, we utilized in the past to do these community outreach and relationship programs.
And we truly appreciate that work, but I, I would just like the council to be accountable to the police department and support community policing as well, because according to you and what we know, it's very, very important.
Right, and, and we do have a line item in the police account. It's a donation line item that, that we do, community cookouts and some Christmas programs.
And, and that's great, but, and we appreciate that, Chief.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chief Weiser, I've always made the statement and stand by that crime fighting must come from the people first. If we don't report the crimes in our community, we're not gonna keep our community safe. Point in case, in the last 30 days, I know that you're the police department, and certain areas has recovered probably two to three dozen weapons from areas. Is that not right?
Yes, that's correct, and...
That the young boys was running around with.
Yes.
And that was because of the people getting involved in their community. So what I'm saying to the citizens, please report any and all suspicious activity. Crime fighting come from the people first. The police cannot do it alone. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? This is an agenda item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, raise your hand and be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second already, correct?
Yes, sir.
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
Cisco Brooks.
Cisco, Cisco made the motion, and Brooks seconded the motion.
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Unanimous pass.
All right, no items on second reading. Got a new business. First item is the election of an FY 2021 vice mayor, and I'll call on our current vice mayor, Councilman Cisco.
First of all, I want everyone to know it's been my pleasure to serve the last year as your vice mayor. I appreciate the confidence, the council showing me and voting for me for this position. You know, any town you can serve your people, Jackson is my hometown. I was born and reared here, and there's no greater city anywhere in the United States of America than Jackson, Tennessee. And I'm so thankful to have, have the opportunity to, to serve the people of this city. And today, I know that it's gonna, vice mayorship's gonna be in good hands, 'cause I'm nominating another native, Councilman Johnny Dodd.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to elect Councilman Dodd as vice mayor for 2020, 2021.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can I make a comment? Councilman Cisco, we thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you for everything you've done.
Any further discussion? No one else wants to say anything good about you, Councilman Cisco?
I think she's, I think...
She spoke for everyone.
She spoke for all.
Okay, all right, all right. All right, counsel, please vote.
Motion, as I said, motion pass, eight to one, one abstained.
All right. Item two is an annual report from the Budget Committee. I'll call on Councilman Taylor.
Yeah, so as part of the tasks that were passed down from the state when the Budget Committee took on the responsibility of the Audit Committee, we are to give an annual report to the council, and so that's what you have in front of you today. What I've tried to do is lay out the tasks that we discussed and took on in the budget and Audit Committee functions this year. I start by laying out the formation of how we were put together, one at the mayor's recommendation at our first council meeting, and then the addition of the Audit Committee duties as well. Some of the areas of concentration that we've looked at this year are initially were budgeting and management principles. The, the, one of the main objectives that we took on was looking at, looking at our projects and the way that we budgeted for special capital projects, making sure that we're capturing, capturing those costs, both the capital costs and the ongoing costs for those projects. We also discussed this year, the committee, the Budget Committee assisted in the bond refunding as well as the FY 20 capital budget. We also looked and reviewed a number of special capital projects that were carryover projects from the previous year, those being the Jackson Animal Care Center, the Jackson City Court, and the Public Private Partnership for Madison Academic High School. Out of those, a recommendation that came from the Budget Committee was the hiring for future capital projects of a construction representative to do a couple of things. One is to oversee projects from their inception and to make sure that we're capturing all of the budgeting necessary, as I just previously said, not only the capital costs, but any additional costs such as furniture, IT equipment, those types of costs. We've, we've generally skipped over those in previous projects and haven't captured those in totality, and we have to come back for budget amendments. I, I think we should be capturing those costs in the front end and be able to present, not only to the council what those are, but also to the public. In addition to that, for ongoing, ongoing maintenance, we need to analyze that. If we're moving from one building to another, for example, City Court, we need to, to be able to put together what those costs are, the savings that we would have, or the additional expenses that we would have during that transition. Some other things that we touched on this year were a number of policy and procedure recommendations. We looked at our debt management policy, which we'll look at again today, stormwater responsibility policy, budget amendment and transfer compliance, which we had included in the most recent budget that, that we approved in the previous month. In addition to budget ordinances, procedures and timelines that I hope we can improve on in the coming year, as well as auditing oversight, a significant portion of, of what we discussed in the early months were bringing on an internal auditor, as well as the formation of an audit committee prior to the, the state's recommendation to take that role on. You, one of the things that the state has requested of the, of the Audit Committee is for us to meet with management after, after our annual audit and go over any of those findings and management's correct, recommendations for corrective actions. We've done that this year. We were satisfied with the steps that the council's taken. Some of those we've discussed in the previous month of reclassifying a number of, a number of departments and other services into the appropriate place to avoid some of the issues that we'd had previously. And then another thing that we need to look at is our effectiveness of our internal controls. It's my understanding that as we get this internal auditor hired, that person will do an internal control review throughout the city to make sure that we're in compliance with those from the state, from the state level. Finally, a couple of future goals that we've laid out for the coming year. The citizen legible budget and our final revision of the budget that we passed in the previous weeks, we've, we've purchased, or we've approved the purchase of some tools for us to communicate to the people what our budgeting process looks like, what our, the budget that we passed looks like, and it also gives the people the ability to, to communicate back to us where they would like to see those dollars spent. In addition to that, we've, kind of a piggyback to that is a, a tax receipt software, so you can go in and put in your, put in your annual income, if you own property, and a number of other variables, and it'll tell you exactly where each dollar that you spend in the city, where that goes. If that go, if $15 of your taxes go towards the Parks and Rec Department... If that go, if fifteen dollars of your taxes go towards the Parks and Rec Department, it'll lay that out for you and be very legible to the public. Uh, in addition to that, um, in the final month of the Budget Committee, we recommended the implementation of a fraud policy. Uh, this comes on top of, uh, of the state's recommendation to, um, to come up with a policy and, and a procedure to, uh, uh, to...
Report.
Um, thank you. A lot, a lot of words here today. To report fraudulent activity. Um, and so, uh, Councilman, um, Brooks and Councilman Pretty have been working on that and sent their recommendation to the, uh, Mayor's Office. Uh, in addition to that, um, once we have the internal auditor, uh, the committee would, uh, need to set up an audit plan for them, uh, continue to address our five-year capital plans, uh, and budget gaps, as well as maintain a budget calendar. I think one of the things that we've said, uh, we've experienced in the previous month is cramming all these budget meetings into one day, uh, or two days, uh, is not amenable to a lot of our schedules. Uh, I, uh, the Budget Committee would like to see us start that process more, uh, in January, where we can set some goals and objectives, not only among the council, but, uh, but here from the community as well, uh, so that the, our budget in future years can reflect those. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, if you have any.
All right, any questions for the Budget Committee? This is not an item that needs any action on, it's just for informational purposes. Our next item is a budget report from the Community Economic Development Commission.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Lori Nunnery with the Jackson Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau, otherwise known as Visit Jackson, Tennessee. Uh, we appreciate the invitation to come before you today to share our budget. As of right now, we are operating off a continuation budget of fiscal year twenty. Uh, that is due for a few reasons. One of those is we are still waiting for grants to come in that we aren't able to plug into the budget yet. Uh, one is from the Tennessee Tourism Department, uh, for marketing dollars, so those, anything that comes in will be put exactly towards marketing. And then we are also, uh, waiting for another one, uh, possibly, uh, it's, it's in Congress right now, uh, is to make our office, because we are quasi-government agency eligible for PP, uh, P, uh, funds, or PPE, or whatever it is nowadays. Um, so we are, we are waiting for that. We are operating, um, right now off of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar budget. Uh, that budget, uh, we have approximately fifty-five thousand dollars of that budget going towards marketing. This is a cut of about fifty percent. Our revenue from the hotel motel tax, we are anticipating will be down about fifty percent. Uh, right now, we just have April's numbers in. Uh, we were expected to be considerably lower at only ten percent of what we usually get. Remarkably, um, our hotels did well enough to get us up to the forty percent mark, so that was a good thing in, in April. We should have May's numbers here in the next week. Uh, so we're just, it's kind of on a month-by-month basis until we know where our revenue is as to what we will be spending that on. We have made a commitment that the majority of our funding goes towards marketing, and that is always a commitment, whether the city or the county invest in us, that any of that money coming in, sixty-five percent of that will go towards marketing, twenty-five percent will go towards staffing, and then the remaining ten percent will be used for operational needs. Unfortunately, yesterday, we did have to let an employee go, so now we are down to an office of two. Uh, and that's very tough because we are in a year where there are not, we don't have the advertising dollars that we've had historically for the past several years, um, and then we don't have the personnel then to help generate the content out on social media and keeping things updated like we would have normally. So we're taking a hit, just as, as like everyone else is, um, and, and my goal would be to get our money back up to where it is and to, you know, get a, get a person back on board for that, but, um, we did have to make that difficult decision yesterday. All is not lost. Um, you know, tourism right now, we're having to change how we do business. Um, as you know, people, uh, consumer sentiment is different right now, um, and, um, you know, Jackson has fared better than a lot of communities across the state during this time because of its location, and it's, um, I would say rural nature in that we don't have a massive population. Uh, that, that is working in our favor. We're finding that, uh, previously for advertising, when we did our advertising, our focus was on that, that four-to-six-hour visitor coming in. Now we're focusing mostly on in-state visitors coming in to us.
One sec. Good luck, Councilman Taylor, about to have his third baby?
Yes.
Well, I don't think I can top that. Um, so, so things are very different, just like everyone else is having to reinvent their business, so are we. Um, you know, we are continuing to push out content. We, during this time, we've created another resource for the hospitality industry where we're getting out information as it happens. Uh, for example, the mask ordinance, uh, we push that out to, um, not only our hospitality partners here in Jackson and Madison County, but to the region. Um, and so we're finding that there are, um, because we're one of the few tourism offices in this side of the state, outside of Shelby County, uh, that we have a greater role to play to make sure that those folks are getting the information that they need, because just like us, they're a small operation and have limited resources. Um, so there's, uh, there's a lot of changes going on. Am I concerned? No. We've operated on a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar budget for several years, uh, while I've been in this position. It's not exactly where we want to be, but it's where we are right now, and we'll continue to work hard as we know our hospitality partners are, um, across the community, trying to build the business back up, um, as it makes sense for people's safety. And that's the biggest concern right now, is that we do smart business, uh, for the folks out there. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions you have. I anticipate having a finalized budget hopefully next month. Right now, this is contingent upon the state and what they're going to be, uh, on their timeline, and as you know, they have their hands full right now. So, um, it may be a moment before we have our finalized budget.
I have a quick question, if I may. Good morning, Lori.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is, is all of your budget funded through the hotel motel tax?
It is. Um, we do receive a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, uh, from the county this year. Uh, the last couple of years, it's been in the fifty thousand dollar range, and then we usually receive a marketing grant from the state that's in the, it, it varies between twenty and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Uh-huh. What percentage of that, what percentage of the hotel motel tax do you have?
Okay, so out of the hotel motel tax, and for those of you that don't know, that's a five percent fee that's added on to your hotel stay here, forty percent goes to the city, forty percent goes to the county, and we operate off of twenty percent of that tax.
Okay, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, Lori, and once you get the, once your board approves the budget, we'll bring it back to council for approval.
Yes, sir, I will.
All right. Any other questions for Lori? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, item four hundred, new business is, uh, HBSB twenty-nine, twenty-six, item for Great Wolf Lodge. Just come on back up, Lori.
What you have in front of you is the act, uh, that's passed by the House, which will alter the, uh, structure of the hotel motel tax to allow us to, uh, attract the business, Great Wolf Lodge. The process of a private act is, the, the city and the county each requested it, the legislature adopted it. The approval process is that goes back to each body, must be approved by two-thirds. Once that's done, what you're really doing is authorizing the mayor to certify to the Secretary of State that you have adopted the ordinance. We have the House bill, the Senate version of the bill has an additional section which, uh, refers to the city of Jackson. This only has the, the county reference, but the, uh, the final version does have the city reference there. So what we're, um, doing would be to authorize Mayor Conga to, uh, certify that to the Secretary of State.
This is the private act that council approved several months ago to send to the, to the state, so is, are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Eight to one, motion pass.
About two-thirds?
Yes.
Sounding good.
Eight to one, motion passes.
The revision of the debt management policy.
Our existing debt management policy, um, limits our annual debt service payment to be no more than twenty-six percent of our total, uh, property tax revenue, including pilot payments, ninety B, uh, revenues as well. Uh, with the budget that the council approved recently, it's calculated to be twenty-six point four percent for this next year. So what we're asking for is to revise our debt management policy and move that percentage up to twenty-eight percent from twenty-six percent. That way we'll be in compliant, in compliance with our policy.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Cannon, second by Councilman Dodd.
Just a quick, quick question, if I may. Why, why do we go to twenty-eight percent instead of just twenty-seven?
Um, it's a calculated number, and so to allow some allowance for, we're not a hundred percent sure what, we know what our debt service payments will be this next year, we're not a hundred percent sure what our property tax revenue will end up being, so it's...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any additional questions, discussions? Counsel, please vote.
Thank you.
Motion pass, eight to one.
Senator, you can take, uh, Councilman, uh, Taylor off. Yeah, don't worry about him. All right, item six is a consideration of the revisions for the OJI policy and procedures on Sharon Smith and Stacy Stone.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning. Morning, Lady Lori.
I know you didn't just call me Leyla.
She got the slice, Sarah.
Y'all were both beauties.
Um, in your packet, we got a summary and the goals of what we wanted to do to the changes for the OJI policy, um, and we put it before you because these may affect our, um, employees' benefits. So in the summary, it's basically just a few changes, a lot of cleaning it up, putting it in a table contest, being able to find everything. Do you have any questions?
I want to say, Sharon, I appreciate the work you've done. You, you've worked hard on this policy to, to clean it up, to make the revisions, to make it more understandable, so good work, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions about the policy, the revisions? Is there a motion?
Oh, approve.
There's a motion by Dodd, second by Cisco. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Pass unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item seven is a consideration of reappointment of Greg Jordan and appointment of Dr. Susan Francisco to the Jackson Madison County Library Board.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass is unanimous.
Item eight is consideration of the appointment of Mandy White to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
A motion and a second, motion by Wallace, second by Buchanan. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass is unanimous.
Item nine is consideration of reappointment of Wayne Arnold to the Jackson Municipal Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dodd, second by Brooks. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass is unanimous.
Item ten is a consideration of appointment of Jimmy Trice Baylor to the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency.
So moved.
Motion by Buchanan, second by Dodd. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass is unanimous.
Item eleven is consideration of appointment to the Net Advisory Board of Billy Duke, Darren Likes, and Daniel Morgan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cisco, second by Wallace. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass is unanimous.
Item twelve is a consideration of a contract with Hope Restored Counseling for intensive outpatient treatment and moral reconation therapy.
Back a couple of months ago, we received bids for this project. We received two bids. One of the bids did not meet our requirements, so it was rejected. The second bid came in, we opened it, and it was for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That was just way too much money, so we rejected that, we rebid it. We sent it out to the same people that we always do, and this time, because this is a special, um, a special project, we sent it out to Cumberland Heights, Health Connect America Pathways, Quinn Co., the Positive Living Group, Hope Restored Counseling, Aspel Manor, and BHG Jackson Treatment Center. We only received one bid, and it was from Hope Restored Counseling, and their price is three thousand seven hundred twenty dollars per month, and Haley is here to explain to you exactly what moral reconation and outpatient treatment is.
Yes, good morning, Council. So, um, the request would be for approval for the bid that we put out to increase treatment services for our clients. We've been receiving moral reconation therapy and intensive outpatient treatment for the past five years with Hope Restored, and it's gone really well. Um, so we have some services we wanted to increase, um, and that would be a mental health therapy group, which we could provide at our office to our clients at no cost, in a timely manner, and from a quality treatment provider that we trust. And so, and also individual counseling. Um, there are some barriers to treatment a lot of times for our clients, and so to increase these services and have them provided in-house to our clients, um, we feel has been great for them and has just enhanced the quality of treatment that they're receiving. And so, moral reconation therapy is a type of behavioral therapy that is aimed at decreasing the likelihood that someone will return to substances or alcohol once they, um, complete the program. And so it addresses kind of their moral reasoning and, um, criminal thinking and criminal behavior as a cognitive behavioral therapy group. And then intensive outpatient treatment addresses those, um, cravings and triggers and some coping skills in the beginning phases that they need. And then the individual counseling would be provided, um, in some of the later phases, and the mental health therapy group would address some of those co-occurring disorders, um, anxiety, depression, different things like that, um, for our clients in the later phases as they've had time to get clean, and so...
All right, any questions for Haley about the contract for reconation?
Moral reconation therapy.
No questions, move the approval.
Move by Buchanan.
Second.
Second by Dodd. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass is unanimous.
Thank you, Council and Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen is consideration of a change order number two for Dr. F.B. Wright Drive, Phase One Road Widening Project.
Good morning. Do y'all have any specific questions?
Kind of go over what it is.
Um, for this change order, um, we had a pipe that was undersized, um, didn't, didn't catch it in the plans, it was a eighteen-inch pipe, was already installed, um, had some drainage issues, which some were intentional to slow down erosion and everything. Uh, as the project's coming to a close, we realized it's a bigger issue and needed to replace the twenty-four-inch, uh, eighteen-inch pipe with the twenty-four-inch pipe, and in that process, the property owner had also requested, uh, smoothing up some banks, so you'll see, uh, forty-foot eight, eighteen-inch pipe was removed, eighty was put back, and that's to allow him to maintain the slope a little better, um, since we already have to do an additional portion to that project. And the other item on there is for an electrical connection. Um, in the survey, it showed that there was a connection to be made, uh, looked like everything was there from a plan standpoint. When our subcontractor showed up in the field, realized there was some additional work needs to be done, um, and that, uh, forty-nine hundred dollars for that is what, what would take to have the box that was initially thought to be there, to be in place for them to continue their work.
What's the, what's the reimbursement with T-Dot for that?
Uh, this is, uh, eighty-twenty.
I believe you said the project is toward its completion?
Yes, sir. Um, they're, they got final surface on the southbound lanes and will hopefully have it on the northbound lanes in the coming weeks.
Total change order, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak on. Did you finish?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, the total change order is to nine thousand, nine fifteen?
Uh, yes, sir, for this one.
Move the approval.
Motion by... Motion by Brooks, or second? Second by Pickens. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Pass unanimous.
All right, item fourteen is a consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Move by Dodd. Second by Pickens.
Imports over ten thousand. Mr. Chairman, is Scott in here or this person who just left?
Chris Gordon, Scott Chairman.
Scott, I'm catching a little heat, and I need to, to help me out about Ford Construction Company who has the street res servicing. I'm catching a little heat about South Row and several other streets where they'd be finished, because I see where they got a forty million dollar payment.
Ford is definitely here at full force now. They, we used to, their contractor, their subcontractor that did their milling got ahead of the paving crew, and so they're trying to make sure they get all the asphalt down on streets that they've already milled first, and then streets like Royal will quickly follow.
I know Johnny, I'm quite sure of the Councilman, because we never had that known before.
We tried to accommodate JA to continue their work on Ford, and like I said, go ahead and get some of the streets milled ahead of time. A lot of traffic complaints result because of that, so they're trying to get the mix on everything. They're at Old Hickory today.
Okay, thank you so much. I may sell them to Mr. Chairman.
They, they called me too, so. They're wearing him out.
Okay, thank you so much. So Ford is here.
They're here, they, they, like I said, their contractor did the milling ahead of time while they were finishing up a job on I-40, but their paving crew is here and they're gonna stay with us till they're complete.
Thank you so much. Scott, one, one other question. We're working through the list that you provided to us.
Yes, sir.
Several months ago.
Yes, sir.
All right. At least tell them that.
All right, we, we had a motion for, do we have a second? Motion is second, any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, unanimous.
All right, no further business. Council is adjourned.